Good evening and welcome to our Committee of the Whole meeting for Tuesday, July 6, 2021. I'll now call this meeting to order. Tonight, we have two presentations. The first is an Incident Command System discussion with our county EMA Coordinator for 50 minutes, and then after that, we'll have Parking Ordinance Amendments discussion for 30 minutes, and that will be led by or presented by our City Clerk, Jackie Danielson. So without further ado, we will hear from Mindy Benson. So Ms. Benson, feel free to come forward, and we look forward to hearing about emergency management in our county tonight.
Good afternoon, good evening, whichever one it might be. It's still very early outside, it seems like. This is the one that dances everything through it for? Not sure which one we're going to use here. But my name's Mindy Benson. I'm your brand-new emergency management coordinator for Black Hawk County. I previously came from Tama County, where I was down there for seven and a half years, and worked quite a few damage and damage assessments to quite a few disasters unfortunately for Tama County. While I was down there, within my first six months, I worked two tornadoes and a flood. So Incident Command is very important to emergency management, very important to communities, and very important to a county overall when you're looking at public safety, when you're looking at communities, and how to work through damages and devastation, and just to get yourself back on track. To back up a little bit, my experience in public safety, I've been in public safety starting my 21st year. I've been a 9-1 dispatcher for the city police, City of Cedar Rapids' Police and Fire Department, was also a part-time police officer in that timeframe, left, went public's private sector for a very short time, then went back and worked at the State Patrol as a 9-1 dispatcher for three years before I went out to Tama County in 2013. So I said when I was with Tama County for those seven and a half years, I did work, within my first six months, two tornadoes that were five days apart from each other, and had a flood all in the same time. So during that first six months, I had my first presidential disaster declaration. So it was very much a very big learning curve during that point, where you learn kind of the importance of Incident Command, very much the importance of having things wrote down, very much the importance of knowing how to get a hold of your VOAD, your COAD, your Red Cross, your Salvation Army, making sure that you have everything written down, making sure that you know when you used what piece of equipment, and when and for how long. Because if you don't, you don't get reimbursed for those things. Knowing that as you have maybe six communities that are devastated, to work together all at the same time. You, it's much easier to have one emergency manager in one spot, and all of your cities come together, so that way you can all work together rather than duplicating and duplicating all of your work. So that's kind of the overview, what we're going to talk about with Incident Command, and fire, law enforcement, military, a lot of, and even public safety, or I'm sorry, your streets department uses a form of that as well. So this is going to be kind of, the slideshow is very much an in-depth look, but we're going to go a little bit higher than that, and just kind of get that broad look, and see how this is going to work for a community during a disaster. Maybe we'll try it this way instead. So this, a lot of this started with the National Response Framework. So this is a really big, thick book that FEMA put out. They started using it back after 9/11, because when the Twin Towers were attacked, everybody was kind of doing their own thing all at once. No one really knew which page everybody was on. And that, they learned after that, was how do we get everybody to working together stronger in one spot, rather than having our police department over here, our fire department over here, and EMS over here, all kind of doing their one thing, but we need to bring them together, have unified command, and everybody knowing what's going on, I'm sure. Chief Olson, you can understand that as well. You've been around long enough that you know kind of where they were at on that day also. But a lot of these slides, I'll kind of go through, and we'll touch on them as we work through them, and just get that brief overview. But the National Response Frameworks talks about our ICS, so our Incident Command Structure, our MACS, our Support Systems, our ESF. So I have to work through what's called an ESF every year, Emergency Support Function. There's 1 through 15. They touch on everything from transportation, to public safety, to animal husbandry, for everything in between. And this brings everything together that helps us through the disaster process. And these all fit into this National Response Framework, which also helps us bring money back in from FEMA, which also helps us get our communities back together after a disaster. So everybody knows what an incident is. It could be anything from a fire, to public unrest, civil unrest that we had over the summer. So that, in a nutshell, is an incident. It can be caused by human, natural disaster, where we try to, the actions that we have, try to minimize the loss of life, property damage, or events on our environment. And why do we use ICS? It gives us that common terminology. It gives us an organizational structure, gives us better communications, action plans, span of control is, it gives us how many people we can have under span of control, how many people answer to a sergeant, to the lieutenant, to the captain, and to the chief, and so on and so forth. It gives us incident facilities and resource management. Resource management is where I come into play. Lessons Learned. This is one that I really wanted to throw in here. This was a big one that we had last year in Tama County, when I was the emergency manager out there. We had that DRAE show that everybody learned, that kind of that new phrase that got thrown out there last year, October of 2020. I'm not throwing Tama County under the bus by any way, shape, or form. We were a small county, very rural county. We didn't have an EOC. There, we were in the process of building one. It was not done. And so, Tama County, 722 square miles, 13 communities, including the Musquewaki Settlement, everybody did their own thing, which was great. But when you have one emergency manager, 13 communities, and everybody is in multi-jurisdictional areas, needing, whether it be resources from Red Cross, resources from Salvation Army, more resources for law enforcement, mutual aid for fire, EMS, DOT, DNR, and I'm one person, and everybody's saying, well, we did this, we did this, we did this, and I'm already saying, I already did that, I've already got that called. We were duplicating and duplicating our work. So that's where the ICS system, Incident Command System, comes in. It kind of streamlines everything. It puts all of us in the same room. We could have been able to put maybe Tama in one corner, Toledo in another corner, Vining in one corner, Troy in another corner, and had your own workings going on at one specific table for each community, and then everybody could have turned around and said, we need help with shelters, maybe in Vining. No problem. We can set a, we can shut, set a shelter up in Vining. And at the same time, Tama could have turned around and said, you guys can bring everybody to Tama. We have a shelter set up. Everybody's located in the same room. Everybody can communicate together, rather than having 13 communities having 13 things going on, and everything, again, is reduplicated over and over again. We also had multiple people calling the same agencies requesting the same things repeatedly. And that's where everybody, those agencies were going, we just received a phone call from this agency. We're too busy. We just received a phone call from that agency. We're too busy. So that's where, again, if we're all in the same location, we can all do the same thing at the same time, and save some phone calls and save some steps. Unified Command would have worked much better, because we all have the mayors there, the decision-makers there, the financial, the city administrators, everybody that has the abilities to write the checks and make those final decisions, working together to be able to say, yes, we want to have town hall meetings to let our citizens know, we understand everybody's with, without power. We want to make the decisions to let them know how they're going to be able to get rid of their spoiled food, when they're going to be able to get back in their homes, what we're going to be able to do without power, have a riot come in, speak to all, all of the communities together at the same time, so we can get the same message back out to everybody in the same venue. Also, this also helps us with the preparedness plan. So if you have city plans that maybe we need to brush up on, everybody can come back in, and we can all sit down together and say, okay, we might not have this resource here, but maybe Waterloo has it, or maybe Dunkerton has it, so we can bring it in. We can also share at the same time. Everybody's able to communicate together, and it's just that, that roundabout way. We also have a system in Black Hawk County, which I just added on to and purchased, the Salamander System. All of, a lot of the people have the little credentials running around with the pictures on it, and it has their credentials on the back with their trainings. We purchased that portion of that that has the ability to track inventory. So now we can credential the inventory to do-
I hear a couple seconds of video.
-has the FEMA portion on it. So you can do FEMA cost codes. So we can inventory fire trucks. We can inventory chainsaws. We can inventory gloves, whatever it might be within your cities. So that way, when we have an incident, we can scan everything that we have in your little book, or it might be a thick book, whichever one, however much we put in there. It's got the FEMA cost codes in it. It's got pictures of everything. It's got when you put it into service, when we took it out of service, whether or not it's active, or it's out of service for whatever reason. Scan that. We can run how many hours it was on there, print it off at the end of the day, and hand it to FEMA whenever we have a disaster. Knock on wood, we don't for a really long time. But then that's a very cost-efficient way. We don't have to sit down and have maybe one of your city clerks or city administrators writing down everything that comes in and out. Within, let's say we have the flood going on, don't have to keep track of boats that are being used by the fire department, or sandbaggers that are being used by the streets department. All we have to do is scan that book. It tracks it. It lets us know whether or not we loaned it to maybe Waterloo, or if it's out of service or out of commission. We can hand it to FEMA and say, this is what we used, how much we used, and it's all reversible. We don't have to do any more legwork or any more paperwork on that. It's all handed to them within that syllable. We can also do that with our employees as well. They can scan in, scan out. We have all their cost codes down. It has everything, has that nice little FEMA cost code with it. And at the end of the day, everything's handed to them and says, here you go.
Can you speak into the microphone? I think some people on Zoom are having a hard time.
I do apologize about that. I'm not used to that. So that's the nice thing about having this Salamander System with this, with the cost codes in it with FEMA, so that way we can hand everything to FEMA when we're done, and everything's taken care of on that with ICS, and our Incident Management portion of it. So that way, we don't have to worry about it. And if we need to look it up, if somebody needs a resource, I can look it up and say, somebody has a trash pump. We can borrow it from maybe La Porte, and we can move it over to Dunkerton. Wherever we need to locate things from, we're able to move it around the county seamlessly and effortlessly, without any issues. So that's another really great portion of having this Salamander System, without needing to relocate or drive around the county, and try to make 12 phone calls all at once, and say, do you happen to have this? Do you happen to have this? Especially if the state's without that resource, because they've used those all across the county. Or if we need generators, because we have another DRAE show, and we have an issue like we had done in Tama County, where we had no power for anywhere from 48 hours up to 12 days. And we need to keep those things going as well. Incident Command System, I'm sure you've all heard a lot about it. It uses, it's used to coordinate on-scene command, control, and/or coordinate an emergency response. You can also use it in an operations center. It just really helps to have somebody from your organization sitting in your EOC, as we like to call it, letting everybody know, or having your decision-makers in the EOC, so that way you can make those vital decisions. That way, you can say, yes, we have people we can send here, yes, we have people we can send here, or no, we don't have people we can send anywhere at all, because they are extremely busy within our own facility. When you have those separated, sometimes it gets a little hard to make phone calls, especially if you don't have a cellular service, or you don't have landline service. It gets really hard to make those phone calls. Then you actually have to drive, have somebody drive from one point A to point B to make those decisions, and, and to try to get that all worked out, and then you have some time lost in that process. And again, it's just a standardized management system. Everybody knows how it works. It's very kind of poignant, effortlessly, and there's really kind of, it's, you know who you, you know who you answer to. Again, just who uses it, fire, law, EMS, airport authorities, military uses it. It's even used in our hospitals here, the ICS system. They have a really great hospital ICS system that's used. Correctional centers, schools are even starting to use this for some of their active shooters, if they have a disaster within the school, anything that might need to have a relocation of students. It's a great system for them to use as well. Public Works uses it, labor unions, transportation. Red Cross really likes to use the ICS system as well. They use all of the military forms as well. They call them 204s, 214s. There's a whole big list of ICS forms that are used as well. And just the goals of ICS is kind of the same goals that we have overall, but it's just kind of narrow, streamlined and narrowed down. To provide safety and health for all responders, save lives, reduce the suffering of our public, protect public health, protect the government infrastructure, protect property, protect the environment, reduce economic and social losses, which is the overall law, the overall goal of anything that we go through, whether it be fire, floods, or natural disaster, or even a hazmat response. So again, you can really inner-work this any way that you want to. It can be really, really basic, or it can be very, very complex. If you've been in the military in any way, shape, or form, you understand how complex it can really be. We like to keep it very simple for us. So this is just really how ICS works. You've got one commander, and you've got your people underneath of it, operations, planning, logistics, and finance. So you can keep it very simple like this when you have a disaster, so people know who to answer to. And if anybody's out, your streets department, your sewer departments, they all know who they need to call back to, if they need a question answered, or whoever the decision-maker is for that department. Pretty much the same in that aspect. So if we would have had this for the DRAE show down in Tama County, we would not have had so many people coming back to me, asking me, well, can you do this for me? Can you spend this money for me? I'm not authorized to make that decision. You have to find your mayor, and you need to have your mayor make that decision for you. We had a lot of people coming to me, asking me, can you buy this for us? Can you buy that for us? Unfortunately, emergency management, we don't have a checkbook to write things like that. So each and every disaster, that needs to come from within your community. And make sure that you document, document, document during an incident, and then track everything. So where that Salamander System comes in, so you can track things, let's say you have an N loader that goes down. We can put that back in the system and track that again. So that way, we can hand it to FEMA and say, we had to buy a brand-new one just for this disaster, and hopefully they'll reimburse it for us. And this, the end of this just kind of runs through everything that each portion of ICS operates out of. So you've got your operations half. You've got your planning portion. This just is an incident action plan. So right now, I'm writing an incident action plan for RagBri. So every incident that you have, whether it be a natural disaster, or it is a flood, hazmat, we write down kind of your basic steps of the day, what you hope to accomplish for the day. Life, safety, clearing streets, whatever it might be for your incident. If you have a flood, rescue, recovery, anything to that effect. It just documents your activities, states what you want to be accomplished. It's pretty easy to do once you have your template, and just kind of go from there. But really, we're kind of getting down into the weeds. This is more of an in-depth conversation we could have at a later date, especially when we, if you want to train on incident action plans or ICS. The nice part is, is I'm an ICS trainer through the state, so if you ever want to get into more in-depth ICS, we can certainly take some time away from a city council meeting. We can do some ICS training. And then it just talks about financing and administration, logistics, and command staff, which your fire department, your police department, they are wonderful ICS command staff, and they know, they work this all the time. And then NIMS kind of comes back into where ICS pulls into play. It's a national incident management system. So if you would like something to help you unwind at the end of the night, this would not be the book to read, but this is a, this is really is a great FEMA document to read, to give you an idea of how the federal system integrates with the state system, which integrates with your local recovery and response system. So if you ever have any questions, please let me know on that aspect. I can get you a copy of it, and you can see how everything integrates and coordinates together. This is kind of my forte, where everything comes into place. So multi-agency coordination system, when it's activated, emergency situations threaten, you know, significantly impacts and involves multi-agencies or political subdivisions. So these are actually pictures of Waterloo and Cedar Falls during the same flood. So if you've got two incidents going on with the same river, it's really good to have the same EOC activated together. So that way, again, like we were saying, I keep reiterating the same fact, having all of your key players in the same room. So that way, you can communicate together. It's the same river. You know, everybody knows that if, not everybody knows, but everybody's impacted at the same time. So if you need something, let's say we have our, our COAD, I keep referencing COAD. It's a, it's a community-oriented volunteers that come in. They can set up shelters. They can set up mass feedings. They can help with transportation of people. It's really great to have all of our key players in the same room, so that way, if we have questions, we're not trying to call to one agency to the other. Everybody's there. Everybody can communicate. We're all taking that same time to sit down and do the same thing together, rather than, you know, we've got one over here, we've got one over here. It's kind of everybody working together for the greater good of all of our community members. Just kind of going back over Unified Command, you see everybody's got their own thing going on. We all come together for the greater good of everybody and everybody in the area. And Incident Command, just kind of reiterating, the comprehensive management scheme ensures coordination, organization, response, and recovery, common response culture. All, everybody's plans are similar, because at the end of the day, you want everybody to go back into their homes. You want everybody to start to recover. You want everybody in the city aspect to start to recover as well. And there's one system to learn. You don't have to keep bouncing back and forth from, what are we doing over here? What are we doing over here? Everybody's together, and you can all communicate together again. And it eliminates any duplication. And then Iowa Department of Homeland Security can also send an rep to come into our EOC, so that way, if we need anything from them, we don't have to keep making phone calls back and forth. They have somebody here that is able to help us, and make those phone calls to the state to say, they need this, they need this, and they need this. So that way, we have the big incident fully in play, and we've got one person here from the state as well. And Web EOC is just another tool that we can use to communicate with the state in a quick and timely manner. So if we need pumps, if we need sandbagging machines, whatever it is, we save those extra steps with making those extra phone calls. I just log in, put in the request. We know within a few minutes, yes, we've got it back. And then we don't have to make extra phone calls back to Waterloo, back to wherever it might be, and say, yep, everybody's in the same room. We can just look at each other, holler back across rooms, say, yes, your stuff's on the way. It'll be here within two hours. So that's just that huge added benefit to have everybody together in the same location. So I know I ran through it really quickly, but I didn't want to take up all of your 50 minutes, because I can't talk that long. I'm not that interesting to listen to.
So open it up for council for, for starter questions.
Go ahead.
So with the EOC, do we have a plan as a community, or a county with Waterloo and other areas as?
[bell dings]
I don't sound like that all the time, I promise.
I do neither.
Do we have a plan in place, community, or county-wide, is what I'm saying? Because I see the EOC, I get it, how we can have a room here. If something affects Cedar Falls, we have the EOC. But if we have something that goes on, how prepared are we to link up and have an EOC? Does that exist?
And that's something I want to work on, and that is one of my many big projects, is that I would like to see, is how we can all interlink together. Even if you have one here, can we get representation out to maybe the county EOC, so we can all work together, all link up together, and all be on the same page when it comes to, what do you need? What are we already have in place? So that way, maybe, let's say yours is damaged. What are we going to, do you need a backup location? So I think that's something we can work on as an emergency management commission, also work through it with our 9-1-1 folks, and maybe even get, if we need to, get a special committee started, to see what we need to do to get that done as well. But I think with a county this size, with the population that we have, it's definitely something that we need to look at getting in place, and see what proper steps we need to do. But definitely. And we can even talk to maybe Lynn County to see what they have in place, because it sounds like they have a pretty robust EOC that they can get operational in a short amount of time with valid key players. So it's, rather than reinventing the wheel, we can just borrow from other counties and use their templates.
May I add to that, Mr. Mayor?
Certainly.
Yeah, so in the past, you know, we've had flooding. We've had other incidences where we have had an emergency operations center in place here in Cedar Falls, and then the county, of course, has had one as, as well. And what we typically do is, we supply one individual to their EOC, so the communication between our city and their EOC is, is person-to-person, as opposed to, to by phone or radio or some other way. But we found it to be very useful to have our own as well, so we can coordinate, it could be police and fire with Public Works or Finance, or whatever the case is. We found that, that works out quite well for us. Our current, in the past, the EOC center has been here at City Hall, but now in the new public safety building, we have the ability to, the technology there to have the EOC center there if needed, or here as a backup. So in the past, it's, it's worked out well that way. And of course, that was before Mindy was here. So, you know, maybe, maybe there'll be some changes may, or maybe not. But that's, that's kind of how it's worked in the past.
Okay. Thank you, Dr. Olson. I'll note, too, we've been having discussions in staff about how our emergency operations center would be set up as part of our city multi-hazard emergency operations plan. And with ICS, with the NIMS framework, it allows you to set things up pretty flexibly with what works for you. And so, to, to the point of, you know, for past floods and looking for how we would operate, we're thinking our emergency operations center is basically going to mirror our departments. So we'd have a public works desk, a public safety desk, community relations, or community development, and finance and business operations. And it wouldn't be the department heads sitting at that desk. It would be a representative, so the department heads can be part of the, the decision-making process, and be more kind of at the executive level. And that keeps, especially if you need to have a 24-hour shift, you wouldn't want the department directors manning those desks over that full-time. So that's, that's an ongoing discussion that, and we've got the plan to the county to review, and we'll be coming forward to council. And that's part of, one of the, one of the reasons for this kind of intro, is to set us up for having that emergency operations plan approved. So are there questions from council on this? Mindy, could you give a brief info on what your role is as the coordinator versus the commission? Like how, like how we engage as elected officials, all the mayors, with you?
So my role as a coordinator is, if you need, whether it be an event or just day-to-day operations, if you need something for, let's, let's say it's an event. We have flooding, and you need sandbagging equipment, or you need personnel to come help that. I'm the one that actually kind of stands in the middle of everything. I'm the cog in the machine that is the one that's able to grab all of the equipment and bring it into you. I'm the one that's, that goes out to the state and requests those items. So even for COVID, I was the one that was working with public health to grab the PPE, request the PPE for whether it be public health. It was the hospitals, fire, EMS, whomever it was. I was, everybody brought the request to me, went out, located the items, brought them back, and then distributed from there. So it'd be the same, same thought process. So it'd be the same, same thought process for a natural disaster. If you need extra equipment for, let's say, you have a bunch of trees down, you need a saw team. I'm the one that's going to, I kind of have a lot of that knowledge in the back of my head almost, is who to call for saw teams, whether it be local church designated teams, state team, private sector. Kind of have a lot of that, those little nuggets of knowledge in the back of my head from, from years past. But just that same aspect is, even in local day-to-day, let's say you have a generator that goes out, I'm not going to use CFU, because they have a very robust and wonderful facilities here. But let's say it's a smaller town like Dunkerton, they have something that goes out, whether it be a pump on their sewer lagoons. Hey, we need help, we need help now. This is what we need. They give me the specs of what they're looking for, and I can send that through Web EOC down to the state. And then if it's a day that maybe DOT is not busy, DOT can transport that to the facility. I just keep track of what it is, where it is, and make sure it gets returned to the person who donated it to the city in the same manner that it was provided them in. And then the commission would be everybody, it's the mayor and then one appointee by Iowa Law under 29(c). And they kind of, they make the rules and the bylaws for emergency management that I have to abide by, and the whole county abides by for disasters and protocols for Black Hawk County.
Okay, great, thank you. Any other questions from council or comments? Seeing none, then thank you so much for joining us tonight. And I'll provide to council some links for additional training if you're interested.
Yeah.
And certainly, the more prepared we are, the better.
Exactly. You can never be too prepared and it's better to be proactive than reactive. I've learned that quite a bit in the last several years. If you ever have any questions, please feel free to let me know. I'm always available at 24/7, unfortunately, unfortunately. So wonderful. If you have anything else, just let me know.
All right, thank you, Ms. Benson. Moving on to our second final item of the night, our parking ordinance amendments. We have 30 minutes scheduled for that, but we can go to 50 in order to, if we want to stay on time for our 7 o'clock council meeting. So that will be our city clerk, Jackie Danielson. So Ms. Danielson, the floor is yours.
Holler, and I was. Good evening, Mayor and City Council. Tonight, we're just going to review some parking ordinance amendments. Before we get started, I just want to clarify that the proposed amendments that are in the packet and being proposed tonight only apply to public parking lots, does not apply to street parking or private parking, with the exception of the relocation of the College Hill Farmers Market. So I just wanted to make that clear. It's just public parking lots. Okay, the clicker's not working. Okay. So as you might recall, during the June 7th Committee of the Whole Meeting, City Council voted to approve the request to Community Main Street Board of Directors to eliminate the new paid parking system in the downtown municipal lots and revert back to four-hour free timed parking. And in the same night, they also voted to consider the College Hill needs separately from downtown. So following that, we scheduled meetings with Community Main Street Director Kim Baer and the College Hill Partnership Director Catherine Sogard. And we wanted to make sure that, you know, we're going to make these changes and they're agreeable and everybody's on the same page about what's going to happen. So throughout the discussion, it was talked to reestablish the four-hour free parking limit in the lots. And those, again, just the public parking lots. And then reestablish the permits for longer parking options, and then continue the 20% limit in those lots downtown. And they want to continue the enforcement as posted. We also had a small discussion about event parking, where if there is an event in the downtown area that, you know, may take away parking, it would be a discussion with the applicant of the event about how that parking could be replaced, or whether they could have someone direct to other parking areas. So. And then following the discussion with Catherine Sogard, they are going to continue the paid parking in the College Hill Municipal Parking Lots, except for the months of June or July. It's kind of a supply and demand. There isn't a huge demand during June and July, so they'll have a, no paid parking during that time. We haven't had a chance to discuss what we would do during that time, if anything, but that can come later. So. And then also reestablish the permits for the longer parking options, continue enforcement as posted. And then over the last year, I believe it started during COVID, the College Hill Farmers Market moved from the north side of the west lot on College Street and moved over to the north lot off of Olive Street there, the 22nd and Olive. And then also utilized that portion of 22nd Street as well. It worked out well. They have pickup areas, so people can just pull up and pick up their items. And when asked if they wanted to make that location permanent, they decided to do so. So that's that last change that you'll see in the proposed ordinances. So the timeline, if council moves forward with the proposed amendments tonight, we will have the final version ready for the next council meeting. We could have the second consideration on August 2nd, or consider suspending the rules and go ahead and adopt it on August 2nd as well. That would kind of coincide with the suspension ending on August 1st, the suspension of the paid lots. So then we would schedule for vendor, the removal of the downtown kiosks, and then we would also start ordering signs. So it's not a huge presentation, so I welcome any questions.
Sure, open it up for council.
Really shouldn't be any surprises in there. This was pretty much discussed at the last committee meeting, so.
Seeing no questions or comments from council. It was a short discussion.
Yeah.
Just to reiterate, what happens to the equipment when the vendor takes them?
Well, we would just have them remove them. There has not been a decision about what will happen to them yet. So we would like them to remove them. Basically, if there is any value in them, we want to make sure that we retain that value and have them removed properly. So.
And could they be used as replacement units in College Hill?
Certainly, certainly.
Can't we just have Public Works take care of those and pull them out?
Again, they weren't involved in the installation of them. So I don't know what's involved below the kiosks, what's wired up and what's connected. And if we have someone disconnecting them that isn't familiar with it, I'm not sure. I'm not really sure.
All right, so no other questions or comments?
I had one. Sorry, I was thinking about too many things at once. How many kiosks do we have in College Hill?
Two.
Two, that's what I thought. And we have, all right, so we could save them. All right, thank you.
All right, well, if no other questions or comments, then that is our meeting.
Could I maybe ask for a motion to proceed with the proposed amendments?
I'll make a motion to proceed with the proposed amendments.
Okay, motioned. Is there a second?
Second.
Motion is seconded, final discussion? Motion is seconded, all in favor say aye.
Aye.
Opposed? Then that does pass, and we will look to see those amendments come forward in our next meeting, or yeah, for first reading. So with that, that was our last item on the agenda, and we will be out for our next meeting to start up again at 7 o'clock. So we are adjourned until then.